Okay, it is after 6:00 PM, so I will call this meeting of the Board of Selectmen to order. It is September 29th and we are at the North Brookfield Police Department Meeting Room. First order of business, if you would all stand please, enjoy me in saluting the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So first order of business is approval of the minutes of September 15th and September 22nd.
So moved.
Second.
Most may a second to approve, all in favor? So next order of business is approval of the warrants. So I'll obtain a motion to approve payroll warrant number seven for $350,454.12. School warrant number 1014 for $84,099.55. And general warrant number 1015 for $232,535.22.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
We have under financial items, the approval of CARES Act funds. We have one item that was finally delivered and the invoice is for $2,408 and they are the Calco sprayer for the town offices. So I'll obtain a motion to approve that to be paid under the CARES Act.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
So old business. The only thing I have under old business right now is that intermunicipal agreement for a public health nurse. So reviewing our meeting of 9-1 and 9-15, I noted that Mr. Alvin stated no less than four times that this contract has been used without any complaints from any Board of Selectmen since 2010. We have been using this and doing it for 10 years. We have been going on for years thinking it was a memorandum of understanding, not just a one-year contract. Then in 9-15, he said, "Why didn't somebody say something in 10 years? You are the first board to bring it up." So I went back and I asked the town treasurer and the town accountant to provide me with all the payments to the town of Sutton and/or a town nurse from 2010 to 2020. And there have been three payments during the original year of the contract and there have been zero payments from 2010, well, 2012 through 2020. So we have not been acting as if this contract was... I got them from the town, Trevor. I don't know what to tell you.
I have copies of stuff from 2017, 2018.
Copies of what?
I have invoices that I've made.
To the town of Sutton?
Yeah.
Well...
Well, I don't know if it went to, I don't know if it went directly to the town. I'll provide you with it. There were $75 in 2017 and $75 in 2018. I didn't go further back because the stuff is down in the basement, but I can, I'll provide you with the copies.
Yeah, well, according to the town records that provided to us by the town treasurer and the town accountant, we have made no payments to the town of Sutton in those years.
And they didn't find directly to her, I'm not sure. I will look.
Directly to the town nurse?
Perhaps.
So then...
So they might be, she might have run her own billing and now because of COVID, she doesn't have the time, so the town's doing it. I don't know. But I'll get you the, I'll get you the copies that I have.
Okay.
It's not a problem.
And while you're here, you stated at the 9-1 meeting that there's a line item in the town budget for a town nurse.
There's a salary for, for a public health nurse.
Not in the town budget. You're gonna have to show me where that is because I had been over the town budget and I went over it to confirm it and there was no line item for a town nurse in it.
For a public health nurse salary, I think it is.
No. Well, you're gonna have to show me because it doesn't appear. It's online for anybody to see and look at. The town budget that's been approved for the last at least three years is available publicly, so... And I went through it again because I was intimately involved with the budgeting and there's no town nurse line item. Closest I can see is a healthcare line item which has $400 in it, so... Alright, well...
There is a nurse line item or there always was, I mean, I'll look, but we paid, like I said, I found, I looked up because the question was, did the, when did it become $75? And so I went into our records and I found one from 2018 and one from 2017. Because she does do reporting for us every year. We do pay her every year for like, you know, she has to report if there's been cases of hepatitis, rabies, all of those things get reported into the state. She handles all of them.
Yeah, well, we're gonna have to have a...
I would suspect that that's what it is. It went to, went directly to Cheryl. That was the payment. Not to...
Who would have directly paid her?
The town. What part do you...
But wouldn't Anne have a record of paying?
Well, that wasn't the question that was asked. The question that was asked was, have we paid Sutton anything?
So the IMA that we have is with the town of Sutton. It's not with an individual nurse of any individual name. So you're relying on this contract to pay the town of Sutton for services that they provide for a town nurse, but if we're not paying the town of Sutton, then we're not paying under that contract.
Okay.
So...
Financial relationship there.
Could I just mention to that end, we do have a revised IMA here that is effectively exactly the same. It just does change the salary amount and update the years from starting now until, I believe this is another 25-year IMA. I can give you a copy here. So we're just hoping that this can be signed and approved so that we don't lose our public health nurse and lose the services that she provides.
So I'm gonna give the one warning now. Interruptions of the meeting will result in removal, alright? So no more clicking of the fingers and talking out, alright? It's disruptive. Thank you.
And I believe that John has spoken Sutton and Sutton is on board with signing the agreement as well.
So what's the percentage of increase from 55 to 75? What's that a percentage?
At the top of my head, I don't know.
I don't know, but we have the payment for over three years.
And the other thing that we have done, we have done, we have done some looking down is that for us to, if we lose this nurse, we're not gonna find another nurse for 55 and we might not even find one for 75. So we've been the high screw.
And now what, what looking have you done? I mean...
From my conversation with John, he's spoken to health boards in surrounding towns.
So Spencer, for example, uses Cheryl. They pay $75 an hour.
I spoke to the town select board and they said it's $35 an hour, so...
They're under contract with Cheryl. She's $75 an hour. Now, I don't know if you're asking for the public health nurse or health agent, but there's a big difference. I know that Holland doesn't have a public health nurse and they're scrambling and they, they can't find one. And they, and it's, you know...
Well, I'll tell you, my thought is this, this particular time, you gave me a number for a public health nurse that far exceeds anything we'll likely spend through this period. I think...
December 30th, right?
Yeah, but I think...
For the CARES Act?
Yeah, because I think right now we have spent not even 4,000?
Total?
Yeah.
Or just for her?
For her.
I don't, I don't know because I don't, I don't know, do we process other payments through CARES Act for her?
All of it's going to CARES Act.
Okay.
Yeah, whatever, so since...
But that was in anticipation of, you know, a flu season coinciding with COVID and possibly a second wave coming, right?
Right.
We just need to prepare in the eventuality.
So what I'm saying is you had given me a number for the town nurse specifically
Yes.
of $28,000.
Yes, okay, yeah.
So we've only spent maybe four
Right.
since this started.
Right.
Plenty of money there
Sure.
I'm sure to get us through December.
Sure.
So all that money is there, so for the limited purpose of dealing with the COVID crisis, I am not opposed to the, to the contract of 75. I do have some issues with that IMA can only be authorized by the Board of Selectmen.
Right.
So municipal, so any agreements under that and any increases under that? So I guess I would say...
Obviously, there's a, obviously, there's something going on. I can produce at least two invoices that were paid to her or I don't know if it was paid to Sutton or I know it went to the public health nurse. So, so I don't know if somewhere before I came on the board or, or, you know, I have no idea what happened. You know, he signed the agreement 10 years ago.
Right, and that's, I had them go through the minutes to, to make sure because there was a question
Right.
as to whether this was a one-year agreement or intended to be a 25-year intermunicipal agreement.
Correct.
And we went through the minutes and although there's no specific, this is one or this is 25,
Right.
the contract language says it's one that can be extended under the Intermunicipal Agreement Act for 25 years by vote, so...
Okay, so we don't know if that's ever been voted on, right?
Well, we know, we know that the 25 years has not been voted on because it has to specifically be voted on. Otherwise, the terms of the contract govern and it's a one-year to be extended by mutual vote.
Okay.
So I don't think that this agreement has been used to pay it, so I don't think we're obligated under the terms. But I will say for the term, for the, for dealing with this crisis, we'll, we'll take your representation that we need to...
I'll get you those documents. I don't know, I think it's a lot of what questions are being asked, right? So, so I don't know. John asked if it was being paid to Sutton. I have no idea. I know that it was paid to the, to the public health nurse when it went to Sutton and then to her or directly to her. I don't know.
Well, if it was paid to her, then Sutton missed out, right?
Well, no, she was, because the low, you know, she was doing her books and billing on time and now she can't. So the town of Sutton is picking it up and billing through town because of, because of what's going on with COVID.
So this is the new contract and it says exactly what the old one did?
Yeah.
Except for 75 instead of 55.
Yeah, I just looked at it quickly.
But it's still renewable every year. Does that, does it say that? We're not signing a 25-year contract.
You know, I believe it's severable at any agreement that goes parties, right?
It says, well, the term of the agreement, so there's a clause in here that's the term. The term is, "This agreement shall be effective from a certain month of 2020 through a certain month of 2021 and may be extended by mutual agreement of the parties for an additional one-year term, but in no event may the term exceed 25 years."
Okay.
So it's a one-year contract.
But every year you re-up that, but we all have to remember to re-up.
Right, well...
Well, that's the thing with, you know, and at that point, maybe in five years ago, when they, or whenever it was, when they raised the fee, this whole question would have came up then with said board back then. Not just, I mean, we looked at it because of the, the number that was on the bill.
Sure.
Otherwise, it would have just gone through. If it was 200 bucks, probably wouldn't have been questioned.
And Tralston writes $35,000 checks to Sutton.
Well, it's a big, it's a lot bigger town. That's the only reason why this came up to question because it was such a, the number was that number. And now it's coming to light where this was never signed or re-upped every year.
Which is fine.
So...
Yeah, because I think the...
The whole discussion was, been going for a month now.
But the purpose of an intermunicipal...
Well, it's a lot, you know, yeah, go ahead.
Well, the purpose of an intermunicipal agreement is one town pays another town that has the service, right? So the town of Sutton is paying their town nurse 40 hours or whatever. If she does work outside of that 40 hours, then she can contract with us directly for that work.
Mm-hmm.
But if she's doing the work during her workday at Sutton, like, that's why Sutton gets the money because Sutton's paying her and we're paying them to pay her. So I guess it would all depend on when she was doing the work as to whether Sutton was to be paid or not, but that's not our issue, I'm just saying.
Yeah, I'll, like I said, I'll give you that, I'll give you those documents. I had them out the other day. Go back further.
No, I just wanna see the line item that it's getting taken out of
Yeah, sure.
because I don't see a town nurse line item, so I'm just curious.
Yeah, that's weird. Yeah, I'll have to look at, I'll have to look it up.
Alright, I mean, if it's purchased...
Because usually, I mean, it's not a lot of money per year because we don't, you know, the general bulk of things is she's kind of there, she works under a physician, which is necessary. And then, and then she does these reports for us and helps us with, if we have a flu clinic or whatever else and that's another course she's gonna be working on, hopefully soon to get flu clinic going in town.
Okay.
Well, I know John had mentioned that we've been using her all along.
Yeah.
Well, apparently, we haven't because there's no proof that we've been using her all along. If you say she was there, fine, but when did that 55 become 75? That was the question.
Well, that's, so I, like I said, I have those two invoices that at least go back to 2017.
Yeah, so just get us the...
Then we'll know what, then we'll know where it's paid out, then we can just ask the question, right?
Right, because I, you know, I mean, there are line items that it can be paid out of that aren't, you know, like purchase of services or something like that, but...
I think, I thought we had a straight-up line item for it, but if you say it's not there, it's not there. So we'll just look at where it comes out.
Yeah, well, it's not there on the one that's publicly advertised, so I'm just curious as to if it got dropped somewhere, so...
Yeah, all of a sudden, we had the, we had the health inspector, animal control, public health nurse.
Yeah, animal inspectors there, food inspectors there, animal controls with the police department.
Yeah, not animal, uh, not animal control, animal inspector.
Yeah, yeah, those, those items are there, but no public health nurse, so we'll look at it and figure it out, but...
Yeah, but the, but the, yeah, that's fine.
How many towns does she cover?
Covers like 19, I think.
So is it just her? Does Sutton have like a pool?
They probably have like four or five people.
Yeah, they have a pool of nurses, right?
So they have to, she'll do the contact tracing or somebody in her office will do it. So, so that stays called local, so...
Right, but when someone has to actually come to North Brookfield, it's her or is it one of the, it doesn't matter? Is it just somebody from...
It wouldn't matter, like for the flu clinic, I mean?
Yeah.
She'd probably come if she, if she could, yeah.
So are we reviewing this thing or we have to sign this tonight or...
Well, unless there's some opposition to signing this...
Well, this is the first I've heard of it. I asked for it a month ago.
To the contract? We had this.
No, Alvin, John was gonna get us the new one updated about a month ago.
Yeah, it was.
It never came through until now, so...
Well, no, he, he came on the 15th and he explained what the delay was. I mean, there was a lot of back and forth, but in there, he did explain that there was a delay.
Yeah.
So we have it now. There's $28,000 in CARES Act money that's dedicated to the public nurse. We don't have a line item in the town budget, so we would have to rely on CARES Act money, but...
So if she comes here for something else, we have to come up with it somehow?
No, I mean, it's all...
No, we've, we've budgeted for her regular, her regular work.
Yeah.
But if it's, if it's COVID-related, we're not paying anything for it.
Right, it's paid, yeah.
It's covered on the CARES Act.
I'm just saying, if it comes in for something else...
I get the question of the, of when it changed or how it's being paid normally. I get it. But, you know, like so for the flu clinic, that might get tacked on to the CARES Act because we probably wouldn't run a flu clinic if it wasn't for, for CARES Act.
Yeah. And I just did the first report to the state for all CARES Act money that we've used between the beginning, March 20th, whatever the, whatever the date was that he first declared an emergency through June 30th. And that reporting has gone in. And I know that the town nurse monies for that line item that we put in for is nowhere close, so I'm, I'm pretty confident
Oh, yeah, yeah.
that we can fund this with the CARES Act money that we put in. And that was the first round. There's another round coming.
Did you get the email?
I think you just sent an email, yeah.
Yeah.
There's been something going on with our town email.
Are you gonna be able to, oh, town emails?
Yeah, it's been nice.
We, we took our computer off.
Yeah.
We're doing, we're doing it right through June.
Because half the stuff I get, I don't know if it's something from before, so I'm afraid to open it.
Yeah, it's horrible.
But I did see that.
Someone was, was working on it or was going through it.
Well, we need a new email provider because the one we got was with the people that started.
Right.
Our...
It's a free service.
Yeah, and they, it was like a bone they threw us. If you go with us, we'll give you the email and it doesn't cover us. So we're trying to fix that and I think we have IT money in CARES Act to fix that so that we can remotely, but that's another issue.
Yeah, so if you can't do that webinar on, because that's about round two, I can take a look at it. I did, I watched it after it took place, but it's on Thursday at 1:00, I think.
But it's available to view, right? You don't have to view it live, right? You can view it after the tech?
Well, they do, they're doing a Zoom meeting at 1:00 and then usually they, they post it back up. But if you have questions regarding it, it might be a good thing for somebody to reserve. I didn't reserve it and I would have given it to you earlier, but I just got it today.
Yeah, and I, and it won't be available from 1:00 to 2:00 on the first.
Alright, well, I'll watch it and we can talk about, because I think still it's going to December 30th and not beyond. I think everybody thinks that it's gonna go beyond.
Yeah.
That, that, that window will extend out tomorrow.
Okay.
Which will be good, but then we can go back and do the town agenda roll-off for recycling and then Ashley mentioned the possibility of laptops for town offices in case...
Yeah, because I did put in a lot of money for IT and remote working capabilities, so there's money for that. So we're gonna get a laptop, one of the lap, we're gonna get like a, a town laptop
Yeah.
so that it'll stay in the selectmen's office and if an individual needs it, they can come sign it out, use it for whatever purpose they need it to work remotely.
Right.
But if there's a need for more, there's IT money for more, so...
Well, we could, we could boost that up if you want.
Yeah.
I'm gonna be placing an order, sorry, I don't beat a bogey. I'm gonna be placing an order with Ashley Thursday for PPE to replenish our stock and also the school needs some, so we'll be able to pull it out. I think we did 8100 or 8200 on that. If you can get, if you can shoot me the number because I don't have access.
I don't have the folder with me, but...
Alright, somebody will just, just shoot me the number by Thursday. Is that okay?
Yeah.
And I don't expect to spend all that, obviously, but I do wanna get the school up to...
So do you like duplicating an order you did before?
I didn't do an order before. I, we got stuff from MEMA and we have stuff that we were distributing out. But, you know, we have a, we have an emergency dispensing site that we, that is located underneath the elementary school in the event of a vaccination program. So that's been fully stocked. We're, we're ready to go. But we took supplies out of it and supplies have to go back in and the school needs some stuff too. So while we, while we've got the money, let's just get the stuff because it lasts for hours and years.
Yeah, and we still have 200, just under 200, 180, I think, left for round two.
Right.
So there was 410 or something like that that was allocated to North Brookfield.
Right.
Some of it's coming back in FEMA money, so we really haven't spent the 200 and something that we put in for. So there's gonna be money. But if you watch that webinar and if it's available after, I'll watch it.
Sorry, I'll send you one if I got one.
Yeah, so we can try to maximize the money. Alright, so on this, do you need to study this more or...
What do you think, Tom? We're signing for one year?
I think we should do a one-year contract.
Does it say one year in there or not? And it has to be extended
It does, so let's...
up to this date?
This agreement is entered into this, what is it, 29th of September.
You said it's all the same verbiage as the last one, right?
It is. I looked, I looked quickly and it's all the same. The critical components are the same. A lot of it's boilerplate stuff.
So you guys will have to put that in your little notebook somewhere.
Our calendar on our computer, that's the best.
Next year at the meeting, you bring it up and, you know, and whatever else. I mean, it just got overlooked.
Yeah.
That, that'll be good for all the next boards coming in.
Yeah.
If you guys, we can't keep an eye on everything.
No.
Highway does the same thing once in a while with their contracts or...
I just don't wanna be in a position when we lose her because we're, we're speaking from the same...
We don't wanna lose her either, so...
Okay, so I, I filled in the dates, so there's no question that this is a one-year contract that'll go from September 1st through September 1st, 2021. So it's a one-year contract at the $75. So I'll obtain a motion to approve that contract.
So moved.
Second.
Most may a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Sign that. We'll get that, so you're good on that. And I think we're only holding one payment that came to us because...
Yeah, we, we...
The check's made. We just didn't send it, so we'll, we'll send it. Yeah, there's another one we signed for today that'll be paid in the warrant coming up.
Oh, another, another...
There was another bill, another invoice from Sutton that was in today's warrant.
Yeah, there's two checks to Sutton that I have in my office.
Okay.
Yeah, so something like that.
When that goes through, Ash, can you get me a copy of that?
Yes.
Yeah.
I'll put it in my file, my paper file.
So she'll hold on to that. She'll make copies and she'll get you guys a copy. We'll send it over to Sutton for that kinda signature. You should be good. Alright, so that handles that.
Wasn't all that bad, was it, Trev?
Huh?
It wasn't all that bad, was it?
Oh, you know me. I'm just a little ray of sunshine. I'm part of the optimist.
Alright, so anything else under old business? Anything you got? Anybody got?
No.
No?
Old business?
Old business.
It's just me and I'm not gonna get started.
Yeah, I know, but...
Please don't.
Alright, so on to new business. So we got chapter 90 reimbursement request. Request was approved in July of 2019 for $16,148.81 at 100% reimbursement. Do you have an original, do we need?
Yep.
So this is money coming back to us, right?
Yes.
Alright, so I'll obtain a motion to get that money?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
What did we fix on that?
I don't know. What did we fix on that? Let's see. Oh, Complete Streets Technical Assistance Grant.
Oh, okay. Pay for it.
Okay, so next, request for resources downtown development for the movie night. Sorry to make you come out, Ethan, but...
No, that's okay. Did you get the email in time or what?
I did get the email in time and I would have been okay with the written portion, the guidelines and everything because you had sent me that other one and I know you talked to the chief, so we're good on that and not being able to put stakes in the ground.
Yeah, that is fine.
I just had a, an issue on the, on the schematic drawing of where the cars are only because you didn't label, so I'm not sure which direction I'm looking. Only because you didn't label, so I'm not sure which direction I'm looking at or where you plan on putting the screen and.
The screen, let's see, if you're looking at it that way, so.
The entrance, where's the entrance?
The entrance is School Street, so if that's at the bottom of the table.
Right over here where the blocks are?
Yeah, exactly.
Okay, so the entrance is like the driveway entrance thing, okay?
So the screen is to the left there.
Oh, the screen's gonna be to the left? So how are you getting?
Screen will be right.
This is, yeah, this is the entrance coming in, right? So the screen's gonna be behind the police station.
Perfect, uh, perfectly good at the police station, so this is
So where we're coming in?
This is School Street.
School.
There's a street.
Yeah, so all the brush and the portion that's not been remediated yet is going to be at the far end of the parking.
Yeah.
So.
So if you're looking at the screen, you'd be looking at the police station.
Okay. Okay, so you plan on getting them out the same way you're getting them in?
Yes.
Okay, cause that was the issue. I just wanted to know.
Oh, yeah, I didn't want to have people drive through the, the fire station area. I thought that'd be, that'd be too much, right?
Well, there's a hill, there's a hill over there anyway.
That, it's, I thought there was a clear path through there.
There's a, a bank.
I could check and see. If you think that'd be easier, I mean, it would be, it'd be convenient, but I also don't expect people to be leaving. I mean, I sort of expected people to randomly leave at the same time, so I didn't know if it would really.
Yeah, but the guidelines say that you can leave, but then you can't come back in or your spot's not guaranteed.
Right, right, yeah. Sort of threw that in just to say.
It'd be nice. So how many CAS are there?
Roughly 30. And there's a row in the back that I'm hoping to be able to get in. If, if the pile of grindings is gone, we're not gonna get another row in, but I'm not sure whether Jason's gonna have a chance to move those.
Because they are on this partial over here where the, all the scrapings are?
Yeah.
Cause I thought he had it on the fire station.
Well, he's got some, he's getting more grindings, cause they're doing the road down East Brookfield Road, so we're getting grindings from there. Putting them over there, cause he didn't know anything was going on over there.
Well, yeah, but shouldn't he talk with us first before he just dumps stuff?
Well, this is all storage. He doesn't, he can talk to what's over here. All the stuff is over here too, you know? They're using it as a staging. I got him to not put it up at Bradshaw Street by the path, cause the neighbors complained up there.
Yeah.
So they're using it down here.
Uh, we'll have to talk with him because.
Don't they dump it down in Crook Road, that's very.
There's some copats down there. You've been down there? I don't go that way too often.
Yeah, well, usually.
It's all the manbrake road traffic that I'm getting, that feeding up the road down.
I know, we'll fix my bridge.
That's the way road.
We were talking about putting, getting rid of those blocks and putting one of those arms that can be moved and then paying somebody to sit on the side and only let him serve.
I'll do that.
We're on the bridge.
Well, I guess we'll try it this way the first night, see how it works and.
Yeah, if we need to revise, we'll revise.
What are you showing?
We're showing the Addams Family, the animated version of it.
Nice.
And we're showing Black Panther and Princess Bride.
Oh, timeless, awesome. You ever notice if you go on Facebook and somebody posts a comment from the Princess Bride? 250 of everybody's famous li, favorite lines from the show, I love that. See, do you have some?
I have a question. Are we gonna have a drive-in movie out here?
Yes.
I missed everything.
Yes.
We're gonna have a drive-in movie. Are we gonna have concessions stand too?
We're gonna have Minuteman Popcorn.
Okay, it would be a procedure. Oh, no, I think it's great. I think it's a wonderful idea. We're sponsoring it.
The Downtown Development Committee and the Friends of Townhouse.
Oh, great idea.
Yeah, we're pretty sure.
And when is this? I'm gonna ask you.
This coming Friday and then two, two Fridays after that.
Soon.
Yeah.
Are people making reservations?
Yeah, there's a Google form to sign up and if women's gonna have people, they can sign up for.
Cause you only fit 30 people, so 30 pairs.
How do you, how do you, where do you get these forms?
It's on the town website, actually.
And, and what if all folks, not me, but what if all folks don't have, have that capability?
Then I can't go?
I would say call, call the town clerk, call Ashley, somebody that'll help you out at town.
We're gonna have flyers printed up so people will know about it, but that's a good point.
I'll put it up at the office phone up here.
Yeah, call the office is probably the easiest way, get somebody in, the town sign if you contact Tara.
I think Sheila, or she might have, I'm not sure.
Okay. All right, so I guess that's all set.
So as of now, if you don't, if you're not on the, the web thing, you can't go.
Right.
That is not, well, I'm sorry.
Well.
He said we could sign up.
Well, now you can, but.
This is the copy?
But you gotta bring Carlo the people.
From this.
I don't know, somebody, I thought somebody, somebody threw it at me.
Oh, can you sign it down here too?
For the bottom?
Yeah.
Yeah, I'll do that. I'll put a phone number on that.
Now, did you talk to Joey about this also?
Yep.
Okay.
His biggest concern was, was idling emissions, so.
Was what?
Idling.
Oh, Joey was?
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, cause.
Carbon monoxide, it's gonna be over there.
Well, yeah, I mean, but there's a state statute that says you can't idle your car more than five minutes, so that's a, that would be a police issue.
So you better not idle your car for more than five minutes.
You know, all, I just wanna say that all the, all the kids who park in the back, well, you guys are too young to remember going to the driver's seat.
Ask Joey at some point to.
The kids all park in the back.
For formality's sake. Um, okay, any more, any more on that? So I guess while we got you in the room, Trev, have you been talking to the chief about Halloween?
I am.
What was it? So my understanding is that we're good for Halloween.
So I spoke to the chief, what we're, what we're working on with PTO is to is to extend hours for Halloween, or trick, do a traditional trick-or-treat this year. So what we're trying to avoid is congregation
Right.
you know, and jamming up people or even, you know, inundating, little hand it up like, like usual. So what we'll do is, working with PTO is we will send out a flyer from the PTO and we'll use, we'll have CARES Act money for postage. And the flyer will just say, if you're gonna hand out candy, please leave your light on at this time, please wear a mask and gloves. If you don't have masks and gloves to hand out candy to kids, we'll have some for you here at the, in the lobby. We'll leave some at the library. We'll leave, we'll put the kits together like we have. That's why, one of the reasons why I only get this PDU in the town offices, right? So, so if somebody doesn't have gloves, for example, they can just, oh, I'll go grab masks and gloves at town offices or here and they're covered. And we'll just ask people to, you know, stay within your group, stay, try and separate out. People that do, do trunk-or-treat, you know, we, it's a, it's a double-edged sword, cause you always start complaints of, well, we used to always get kids, nobody comes to my neighborhood anymore, so now I have to warn everybody. Hey, guess what?
Yeah.
Hopefully they're staying in your neighborhood, but those that do wanna do trunk-or-treat and all this is, you know, still has to work with the PTO and everything, so they're, they're trying to be this week. So we could take some of those trunk-or-treat people who decorate their cars and stuff and, and space them out around.
Perfect, yeah, the school, fire.
Have a couple here, a couple up there.
Maybe on the common, just a couple.
Right, so just so that we can encourage people to kind of stay in their own neighborhood-ish, right? And then the other aspect of it was to, and speaking with the PTO, I don't wanna speak for them because I don't, you know. One of the ideas was a scavenger hunt where people who decorated their houses might say, oh, drive by 37 Mount Guyet, sorry, whoever Elizabeth's name is. Drive by here and can you count five spiders? Yeah, okay, and then they take that sheet and go down the school at the end or at some point and give that a key. So we'll still do something a little scandal over and above the normal trick-or-treat, but the, the main thing that, that I would be concerned about is people being on the ground during.
Right.
And the, and the, you know, I mean, it's, it's crowded down, it's a popular event down.
Yeah, cause, cause we had talked to the chief and we're, we're not opposed to a Halloween event.
Right.
But the PTO always organized the trunk-or-treat, so from our perspective, the traditional door-to-door.
They're, they're avoid for, yeah, they don't, they don't, yeah, they, they prefer to do a traditional this year.
And talking to the chief, I talked to him today and I thought adding some time onto the window would encourage the spacing. So you get the younger kids, so we're gonna start at 5:00 instead of 5:30 and go to 7:30, I think he said. So you get the light, the young kids hopefully will go out earlier and then the older kids maybe a little later and maybe we'll space it out a little bit, so.
This means you have to have two bags. You fill up one and the next hour you fill up another one.
There you go. But that's why I'm so heavily invested in all the, that's what's going on.
A lot of camp, yeah.
So I think that, yeah, I, I think that system would work. We just need to encourage people to, you know, particularly if you're handing out stuff, to use proper hygiene. And tell, and, and if you're going out, you know, bring, bring a bottle of hand sanitizer with you. Cause the kids, they don't, you know, they're gonna have their masks and they're gonna be, you know, they're gonna be all made up and stuff, I get it.
Cool, all right, so the chief will be sending out his announcement that, of the times and.
Yeah, we're, I'm, I'm working closely with, with chief and Joey as well.
Excellent. Fire reports for July and August? I would have John read it, but I'll take it just as long as Joey was here. Did you, did I get a chance to show him that up or?
He can always pick it up.
Give it a go. So this I just read? Can we add a tab to the town website and put the fire and police reports on?
So.
I can try.
So they. The monthly fire report for July 2020 is like 12 pages long. They did a bunch of stuff for your benefit. I guess just read the front page. They had two new applications and it doesn't say for what, I'm assuming that that's for firefighters. They had fundraisers, they said, all our fundraisers postponed with the state of affairs. Minor repairs this month. They're working on pre-fire plans, after-action situations, what kind of response they need. They had a meeting with Green Bull regarding pre-fire plans. Group training is continued weekly. Make general cleaning at the station. Truck fill station hose holder built and installed. Three false alarms, three illegal burns, one storm coverage detail. Two medical assists, one electrical fire exterior, one motor vehicle eight accident rollover. Weekend shifts. And we'd like to thank all town agencies for their assistance during our responses. Thank you, Chief Hallway. And then it has the weekend shifts in heavy, uh, heavy detail. So I think that's good enough for the.
Yeah, maybe we should mention the little red signs with the, your house number on it. Uh, that Darren and the guys have been putting out, uh, that's for the fire safety committee.
Well, we kinda just did.
Yeah, but you didn't.
No, you just did.
Oh, okay. What is it, $20? You sign up and you get on the list. It's a red, uh.
Yeah, you see it popping up all over town. It's like a steak with a little red sign that goes the number of your house. So it's visible at night for all emergency services, police, fire. Uh, it's $20. You see somebody at the fire department, fill out the form, they'll come and install it for you and make sure that it's there, so. Uh, and that, there's a form for that that's available on the website, the town website.
Sure. Or you can go down and see Darren.
We brought, you brought it up.
Well, I, I just keep seeing them coming around and I talked with Darren last week about, you know, the guys putting them up, so. I think it's a good idea, uh, better visibility. A lot of people have a small number on their house or on the mailbox and you can't read it because it's been there for 20 years. These are nice little red flags that, uh, and they'll be happy to put them up for you, so. Yeah, I just wanted to let town know.
Monthly fire report for August, two new applications, still no fundraisers. Engine two had a little change and oil sensor replaced. Brush one, trail lights plugs installed. Still working on all the after-action stuff and pre-fire plans. They started the street numbering system. See if you waited two seconds.
I jumped the gun, sorry.
Installed a few smoke detectors under red cross program. Some conducted business inspections. Training has been modified regarding COVID protocols. Group training continued weekly. They conducted several drills involving search and rescue along with fire. Is that the attachments?
I think so, yeah.
Uh, three other towns in using the training center. Fire station maintenance, replaced windows. In the debriefing room, uh, three more to do in the kitchen and the stairs. Outlets checked up front. Two new hinges installed on bay doors. Hose carrier installed for filling the trucks. New used high-band radio installed in the main office. There are two radio systems to use when we are dealing with storm events, et cetera, along with the antenna. All installs are done by firefighters, no cost. Responses, there are six false alarms, one structure fire in town, four illegal burns. Two storm coverage details, over 40 responses. Assuming they're pumping out basements and stuff, right? Two medical assists, two lake assists regarding floating stumps, one natural gas leak. One of our firefighters has been activated out to the Creek Fire in California. We'd like to thank all town agencies for their assistance during all responses. Do you know who went?
You don't, no.
Cause George Nallett goes to a lot of that stuff, but I don't know if he's still doing that or not.
Well, that's true, I do.
So I'm going to approve the fire chief's reports for July and August 21st.
Second.
Motion, may I second all in favor?
All right.
Okay, what else have we got? Spectrum contracts for the easement and licensing at the water department. I reviewed these. So Spectrum is doing some upgrades for the internet and they needed an easement to get to the various lines, right? So it'll take a while for the easement to process, so they're asking us to grant them a license which will allow them to do temporarily what they need permission to do permanently. So the license language mirrors the easement language, so. Yeah.
Question about the contract. Do we know how long the temporary window for them permission having to do what they need to is going to be for? And do we know what improvement signals you can make?
You're talking about what we're talking about now, right? The easement?
Absolutely.
Um, they're upgrading the lines for internet access. So they need access to the power lines that are there with national grid. So in order for them to come across town property and access each pole along the way, we need to grant them an easement. So the easement will grant them access to fix their lines, to come across and repair anything. I think there's a certain portion that goes underground, so we have to give them permission to dig up to access those lines. Uh, so that's what the easement does. The license is a temporary permit to do what the easement allows them to do in perpetuity, so. They're gonna mirror each other in the language, only one is a grant of, um, the temporary to access the overhead system and the underground distribution system, so it's just that one script that's covered by.
For the license, do you have an idea how long we're going to be administering that inspection?
The easement in perpetuity, so it goes forever.
I was talking about the license.
The license until the easement's in place. So they're going to, um, gonna need access to the property in order to upgrade. So Mass Electric actually owns the poles and Mass Electric does not currently have an easement to maintain their poles. So we're just giving formally permission to do what they need to do because it benefits us if something breaks and they don't have access, so.
Definitely.
So anybody else, you got any, any issues, concerns?
Nope.
John, any issues or concern?
Good.
So I'll entertain a motion to approve the, the documents.
So moved, second.
All in favor?
All right.
Aye.
Side page three. Are you notarizing these?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, I'm in a minute.
Step on Jason's toes.
Fill that out before you sign it. Does this have a signature page?
No, that's just a stub of work. Uh, oh, I, I gave it to you, how to correct that.
All right, the next thing is drone insurance.
This is a, um, you guys just, or one of you needs to sign. And it's coming out of the general insurance.
So funding is in place?
Yes.
And we have, uh, for those that don't know, the police department here has a, a drone. And it's, um, one of the only drones in the area, so we get called, our police department gets called to, um, to use it search and rescue. It has the infrared detection stuff on it and, uh, camera, I guess, which is really good from a very long distance. So, um, it's a twenty-five thousand dollar piece of equipment that we were able to purchase with a grant. But we need to ensure it so that if it ever crashes.
Yeah, God, don't let it crash.
Yeah, I lost the drone up in Maine, flew it out over the water, died, died coming back and I lost it in a tree.
I watched a crash one too on the trail.
I get that one bad. Close to the.
Dale won't be, Dale won't be piloting this one.
Yeah, no, they won't let me touch it. So I, I'll entertain a motion to approve, uh, the insurance document for the drone.
So moved, second.
Much may a second all in favor?
Aye.
Does this need a signature?
Yeah, that, that page right there.
Oh. Okay, good, yeah. Uh, we have one announcement, uh, unless anybody has any new business, anybody else got anything new to bring up?
No.
Um, all right, so, um, announcements, the water department will be flushing hydrants between October fifth and October twenty-fourth. So, um, usually we have a big, we have, usually they give us a document that says, be careful of your. Flushing water mains throughout town, October fifth through the twenty-fourth. The purpose is to remove sediment buildup in the mains. May result in temporary discoloration of the water caused by particles being dislodged during flushing and it may stain your laundry, especially white materials. The flushing is performed between the hours of seven-thirty AM and three-thirty PM. They post the daily flushing schedule on the water department Facebook page. Uh, so look for your area on the Facebook page and if you have any, uh, questions, you can call the water department, five oh eight, eight six seven, oh two oh seven. Uh, so I guess you should run your water a little bit before you throw your laundry in and let that stuff run out before you. All right, has anybody got anything else for agenda items? Anything else on agenda items either?
No.
All right, so, uh, public comment period, um, anybody have anything they wanna bring up, present, talk about?
Yes, I came with a specific question. I, prior to that, I had, I had no idea that the town had a town nurse. So I couldn't believe it when you were talking about flu shots, cause that was my question. Does the town, any, any organization in town do flu shots?
Not typically.
Who does flu shots?
Not typically, right? I mean, we don't normally.
It's usually coordinated with, uh, with, um, seniors that do what it does go on, but, no, it's gonna, it's, it's, uh, we're looking to try and do one. Going to get it at the senior center.
You will do it at the senior?
That's what we'll take.
Does Hannaford's charge?
No.
You can go get one at Hannaford's.
I didn't know that either. I mean, and there's lots of places.
Get your flu shots.
I just didn't know. I, I know that other seniors, senior centers have done in the past. I didn't know if North Brookfield did and since they're not operating, I don't even just want.
We got permission today to use the senior center.
John is like Mr. Whoopi, the man with all the answers.
So when, uh, any, any anticipated?
We just, we just, we just got the permission, so now we'll, she, she's on board to do it. I don't know when, when the dates are. I'll let you know soon.
Yeah, what's the typical flu shot, like, season? When, when, when are they saying people should get a flu shot?
Yeah, so right now, um, cause, cause, you know, generally they last like four to six months mostly. Uh, so, you know, now we're, we're in October, so, yeah, when we, when we have one. We have one, if we have a flu clinic in October.
Okay.
Well, I think the sign was up down there, police call, at Hannaford's.
Yeah, you can get one. You can, oh yeah, that's around. You can get one at CVS, Walgreens, Hannaford's.
But she was asking in town.
Right, but from public health perspective, you know, the kids have to all get it by December, I think.
Right.
School, right?
Yep, um, so, you know, let us know, we'll get on the sign if, if you need to advertise it. Yes.
When is the peak of flu season, when it's at the worst?
I think it varies by year.
If we average it out, would be like January, December?
Yeah.
Thank you.
That would depend on who washes their hands and who touches what. How fast they go.
You need a bubble.
Cause it, now the spread, I'm assuming the, the spread is kinda similar to what they're saying with the COVID thing, right? Like, they have anticipated this strain of flu, one person gets it, well, typically spread it to four and then another strain, one could give it to ten.
Usually, typically the way that it works is, um, there's multiple batches of flu vaccine that are already produced based on what they see in the field. And so they monitor countries like Brazil right now, right? Cause that, they'll, they'll be going through their flu season. They're monitoring China, they monitor India. A lot of it comes out of India and then, and then they say that's the strain that takes on. So a lot of times people go, well, I got a flu shot, I got the flu, right, it was the, you know, it's the wrong flu.
Right, cause they come after the fact, they come out with that was twenty percent effective, that was sixty percent effective, so, yeah. That's the way it is. All right, anybody else?
I just wanna say that, listening to one of the medical experts, uh, they stated it was really essential, uh, to get a flu shot this year. It was actually, listening to him was frightening. It's real essential that we get the flu shot.
Yeah, well, certain people are vulnerable and you don't need to.
Yes.
Well, my father-in-law got Guillain-Barre syndrome from a flu shot, so there's a certain percentage of the population that cannot get the flu shot and it's hereditary, so they're saying that, um, your family members are advised against it.
What did he get?
It's a, called Guillain-Barre, it's a syndrome that affects the nerve endings and, um, for him it started in the feet and he lost sensation, couldn't feel his foot touch the ground and if it progresses to the lungs, it will kill you, so, um, they rehab, but it's, it's created, it's induced by the flu shot.
It resulted in the flu shot?
So certain people in the population, um, so that side of the family, it's hereditary, so. But there are certain ones, you don't know until you get it, it's not one of those things you know ahead of time. What do you do? But that, there'll be a certain amount of public, but I think, I think the, the more people that get it, the less it passes, so you're not gonna get everybody, but, right, you get most of the people. That, was that the herd immunity type deal that they talk about?
Well, yeah, well, for flu, we, we haven't had a situation where we've gotten to that.
Yeah.
But the, the saving grace is that people washing their hands, people being more hygienic. And so that's gonna be a big, that'll be a big factor in flu safety.
You know, one other reason why they're, why they're talking about the importance of it this season too is because of potential COVID cases, they don't want flu patients overwhelming ERs and hospitals where COVID patients may need care. So people getting the vaccine can theoretically hopefully, you know, reduce the load on hospitals for when the C increases.
Yeah. Anything else?
It's a master plan survey, uh, is due the end of the month, so if you haven't done one, please try to fill that out online and get it in mail, so we would like to, we're gonna wrap this up at the end of the month because we have to move on and process stuff. We can't really extend.
So do your homework.
Ours are all sent out. Whole house full.
Awesome, yeah, and that's available online?
Right, also it's been mailed to.
Yep.
Oh, it's been mailed to everybody?
Well, you can drop it off. Just saying.
Yeah, oh, yeah, cause it was available in the town offices too, right?
So town offices are only open till Thursday, so I had to know from Friday.
Well, they have the Dropbox.
Yeah, the Dropbox.
Yeah, Thursday, it's probably the last day to do that, so. This is basically the last week.
Okay.
Please do that if you have it.
Yep, and if you wanna say, make sure you get your say.
Oh, I, I did.
All right.
Anything, it's all good, right?
All right, anything else? Anybody? We good?
Cookies?
How come you almost over here when you say anybody else?
I was thinking cookies, right?
I know.
Darren, do you have anything to say? Do you wanna, or do you want a second?
Nope, I'm good.
Okay.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, good night, everybody. Thanks for coming.